Good evening. Today is Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. I am Heather Pepley, Clerk for the City of Manistee. The City Council's February 16th, 2021 regular meeting, being conducted remotely, where all members of the City Council are in separate locations and not at the city held council chambers, will be called to order by Mayor Roger Zalinski shortly. As always, this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Manistee TV cable channels 189 and 190 and available at manistetv.org. City Council and city staff will have video and audio available for this meeting. Members of the public will be audio only. The microphones of all members of the City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk will always be live unless there's an audio disruption. Mayor Zalinski, we are ready to proceed with the meeting.
Thank you, Heather. We'll call a meeting to order. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman.
I am unmuted in here.
Councilmember Beaton, here. Mayor Zalinski.
Here.
Councilmember Sipsick, here. Mayor Protem Schmansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac, here. City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
Deputy Clerk, here. City Assessor.
Here.
Finance Director.
Here.
Planning and zoning Director.
Here.
Police Chief.
Here.
Fire Chief.
Here.
City Engineer.
Here.
Mayor, that's, uh, roll call is complete.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda-related items. Each person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the City Clerk by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals will be asked if they have a comment or if they are passing. It's very important that those giving comments have a good phone connection and no sound or noise or no, no, sound or noise in the background, such as televisions. Audio should be muted. Otherwise, there will be a disruptive audio. If this issue cannot be corrected by the caller, we'll, excuse me, we'll move on to the next person in line. Meeting discussion topics for those who don't have an agenda are: The consent agenda, approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification regarding next work session. Other agenda items. Consideration of engaging with the Michigan Municipal League to conduct a recruitment, recruitment process to identify the next City Manager. Consideration of a resolution to authorize voting system grant agreement. Consideration of amendments to the Manistee City Ordinance, Chapter 650, NI BLIGHT. Consideration of authorizing to pursue the 2021 FEMA Fire Department Grant for 12 self-contained breathing apparatuses for the Manistee Fire Department. Consideration of compensation commission recommendation for council salary. A report from Republic Services in consideration of planning and zoning enforcement. Heather, well, we will now take, uh, public comments. Heather?
And at this time, I don't see any members of the public, uh, with us.
Okay, we'll move right along. Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda considered by the City Manager to be routine matters. Prior to the approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item, excuse me, from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include: Approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification regarding next work session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Grabowski.
I'll second.
Anybody want anything removed? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of engaging with the Michigan Municipal League to conduct a recruitment process to identify the next City Manager. The Michigan Municipal League, through their executive search services, assists communities with the recruitment process to identify the next City Manager. Their next City Manager. The MML is willing to assist the city in this process. The cost of their assistance is $17,000. At this time, council could take action to approve contracting with MML in the amount of $17,000 to assist the city in a recruitment process to identify the next City Manager and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the necessary documents. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Bachman.
Grabowski, yeah, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions?
Yes. Um, if you could just walk us through the difference between the enhanced version and, and this version that you've selected for us to vote on.
Um, if you go to the executive search service overview, I think that's probably gonna give you the best, um, answer to that. Uh, the typical services are listed out for 17,000 and you can go to an enhanced, uh, service. You get up to five personal visits with the search facilitator, community roundtable, uh, during the profile process, open house during interview process. Um, in that rate, that would get you another 19,000. And then you can go down from the, uh, typical and, uh, you just lose a few things and you save $3,000. Um, you know, I, I looked at the, um, the next step up, the enhanced. I just didn't know, and you know, in the, in the day, in age of COVID, you know, how it would go with, you know, the community meeting a candidate over Zoom or Teams. I just didn't think that was too appropriate and I didn't think it was necessary, you know, to add some additional things, such as that because of the constraints we had with COVID. And, and I just, I don't know that we'll be there in May or June to have, uh, in-person meetings of those sizes.
I guess my, my concern is, I remember the process that we went through, uh, to find you. Um, even though I wasn't exactly on council at that time, I was very attentive at all the meetings. Um, I just wonder if we're gonna find the right candidate with five. If they're only gonna look at five or narrow it down to five.
Well, they, yeah, I think you are, uh, for, for, for a number of reasons. Number one, I think Manistee, just because of it being Manistee located where it is, uh, is a very desirable community to live and work in, like, number one. Number two, with all the exciting projects that we have, uh, going on at this time in the community, I think that's gonna, somebody, someone is going to view that as very professionally rewarding. Um, also, uh, with the MML, they do a very good job of both passive and aggressive recruitment. Passive is just advertising in the normal spots. But then the aggressive is that, you know, with the context they have, they know of, as an example, they know of managers that have left the state or have ties to the state, may wanna come back. They might, uh, know, uh, of, of managers that are currently employed but are looking for something different. Um, so I, I think we'll be okay at the, at that level.
Mr. Taylor, correct me if I'm wrong, but they look at a lot more than five people or five candidates. They just, they present us with five and we can reject those five and move on, can't we?
Exactly. You know, oh, anybody that, that applies.
I got a quick question. So if we don't find somebody with those five that they give us, do they keep helping us or do you have to pay again?
I think they, my sense is they continue the search process. Now, I think there's a limit of, uh, to their largess, you know, if, you know, if you continually reject five, they might add some, uh, more onto that. Um, but that's my guess. I haven't asked that specific question, but that's the way I would look at it.
Okay, and is this like the standard for finding a City Manager? Cause I, I don't know. I don't know what they did the last few times.
It's my understanding that the, the process that I'm recommending is virtually similar to, you know, same, very similar to what was done the last time.
My memory is, if me correct, that this is the same way we did it last time.
And certainly, you know, I think that if during the process, the council wants to alter it a bit and ask for something different, I think they, I'm sure they would do it at it, but, but there would be a price associated with it. Um, you know, one of the things I would suggest if council, you know, approves of using the MML, I already spoke to the representatives and they're available next Tuesday. And I would suggest maybe we have a special meeting to answer some of these questions that I'm unable to answer at this time. And then also, um, that would actually get the process started and, uh, they'd be able to offer, you know, some scenarios of, you know, a, a timeline and different things like that.
Can, can we ask questions to them, like the next meeting, before we decide on spending this money? Can we, can we do that?
It would be a, a, a special meeting, so you, you would have authority to take action. And what I'm looking at tonight is, is just an approval with, to go with their typical search. Start talking with them next week and if you change your mind and you wanna go up a step or down a step, you can certainly pivot at that time.
Can we back out if we're not comfortable with that or, or no?
It's, it's council's prerogative.
This is Mick Schmansky. Um, you know, my experience with, with hiring and working in civilian personnel offices is that, uh, services like this are essential for communities like us. We don't have the expertise, uh, to be able to, to go through the minefields that are out there. Uh, there is a lot of, of challenges when you're hiring somebody, uh, at the level of, uh, a City Manager. And, uh, I would, I would definitely, um, propose that we go with, uh, MML. Uh, it, it's just, the, the question would be at what level? And from what I understand, the standard level is more than, than sufficient for our needs.
That, that's also my understanding in talking with, uh, with the representative from MML.
I, I have another question. Um, what are we gonna do about compensation? Are we going to just offer this opportunity out there at your current salary level or how does that work?
Well, they'll work with us to come up with, uh, an add. And what we normally do is we give a salary, salary range and we list the benefits and then, uh, once council has selected the, the candidate and that candidate is interested and then you would negotiate an employment agreement, much like, uh, was done with me.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Is this the same timeline and basically the same setup as last time when we were looking?
Yes, I believe it is. Yeah, cause it's-
The same cost and everything?
I didn't check to see if it was the same cost. If, if there's any difference, I would believe it to be minimal.
Okay.
This, this is the standard package that they've been using for a number of years, the same format.
All right, I'm kinda, I would like to talk to them and ask questions before we vote to actually hire them.
Okay.
Is there anybody else with any questions or concerns?
The compensation package and vacation time and all that, I think we need to think about. Um, I know that I believe you have five weeks, Mr. Taylor, and I don't know if we'd wanna start somebody out at five weeks. Um, I, I think we do, I think we do need to talk to the MML, MML representative and get a feel for how this is gonna work.
Yeah, we can do that. And again, um, a lot of these benefits are negotiable between the city and the candidate. And, you know, you can, I would suggest you start out with ranges, like, you know, as example, you're comfortable with offering a candidate between three and five weeks of vacation a year, a salary range between X and Y and those kind of things.
Okay.
Yep. And, and that's, that's pretty standard. Uh, my question is, if we don't go with MML, what are the other viable alternatives for us to be able to recruit, retain, and appropriate candidate for your position?
I know of one other individual in the state that does it. Um, but I think, I don't think, I know MML is head and shoulders above that individual. I just don't think there's anybody else that is, uh, as experienced and as connected as MML.
And, and this other candidate is an individual company, is not a, a not, a, a, uh, not-for-profit organization for supporting community and municipalities, correct?
Correct. But if, if council is interested in the concept of engaging with the MML and just wants to fine-tune the level of service that they'll provide, I think, you know, if we could get a motion to that and then I can, I can, uh, schedule the special meeting for next week.
So could we make our motion to hire MML and, and not at a specific level?
Yes, and then you can, you can, um, say you're, you're going to engage with the MML for the executive search and then subject to determining at what level and that would be decided the following week, something like that.
And, and then we would not have to go back to, to do this again, uh, as far as, um, approving, as long as we proved it with those considerations?
No, you wouldn't because you would, you would, the way I envisioned it, if you, uh, tonight, approve engaging with the league for the services, come back Tuesday, next Tuesday, have a special meeting. The league rep walks you through the process, talks about how it's gonna work, timelines and things. And, and you decide, um, on a level of service you want, then you can certainly, because it's a special meeting, make a motion to that effect and then it's done with.
So what, what would, what's the cost of the lowest level of their services? Do we have that dollar amount?
It's either 17 or, or not 17, 13,000. Let me get that.
I think it's 14. That's what it says in the packet. Yeah.
14. And what's the high end is 19?
Well, they can go up to 23 if-
23.
And on all the extras.
So, so we could say, uh, from 14, not to exceed $20,000?
Certainly.
Mr. Taylor, if we approve this tonight for 17,000, what I think I hear you saying is that can be adjusted Tuesday. We can change that amount Tuesday?
Exactly.
Well, that, that's why I'm saying is if we give a scale of between 14 and $20,000, then that way we're being, um, completely open, uh, to the public about what the, the limits are with our spending. So we wouldn't necessarily have to go back if we're gonna increase by 2,000 or decrease by 2,000. That would be my suggestion.
And I think that would be sufficient for tonight and I think just, you know, in, in the, uh, aspect of transparency, if next week you decide that the typical service is, um, appropriate, you just make a motion that you're gonna go with the typical service at a cost of $17,000. And then you got it zeroed in.
And, and if after that meeting, we are not satisfied with MML, then we, we just basically cancel where there's no loss, correct?
You would, uh, I'd have to defer to the, the City Attorney, but I think if you've approved an action, I think you would have to take another action to reverse that.
Okay, got it.
Can't we just, can't we just move this till after we have a meeting with them and then decide what we wanna do? I don't understand why we have to decide now and then have a meeting.
Well, the meeting, I believe it, the intent of the meeting, in my mind, the second one, was once the councils decided to go with MML at, at a specific, um, price point, then they, that would, the next meeting would actually kick off the process. You would get to meet at least one of the, uh, individuals that would be involved in the search, talk about in further detail their, their process and how they run it, what kind of timeline, and be able to ask questions such as you have tonight of, you know, how many, is there a limit of, on the number of candidates that you can, uh, that you'll present to us? As an example, if we, you give us five, we don't like them. Are you still gonna be able to give us another five, you know?
Well, I, I understand that. I just, I feel like we're doing this backwards. I feel like we should meet with them first and then decide what package we wanna do, if we wanna do one.
Yeah, it's council's choice, um, however you wanna approve it or approach it.
Mr. Taylor, if, um, or miss, maybe Mr. Sailor, if we, uh, had a motion to table this tonight and bring it up at the next meeting and meet with MML, would that work?
Sure, not the next meeting. You could either go with the motion that is currently on the floor or amend that motion if you wanted a different level of service from MML from the $17,000 service.
Is council, anybody in council wanna table this?
I think that we should table it and have a special meeting on Tuesday and then bring it up at our March 1st or the first week of March, whatever that date is.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Grabowski. Now, just so I understand, and Heather probably too, are you tabling this to the special meeting?
Yes, to the special meeting, right?
Which is not the first meeting of March, but it was, is next week's meeting.
Next week.
Yes.
Everybody clear?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Please take the roll.
I'm sorry, who seconded that? That was Councilmember Sipsick that made the motion?
Yes.
And who seconded it?
I'll second.
Thank you. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of a resolution to authorize voting system grant agreement. Council approved the purchase of an additional voting tabulator for the processing of absentee ballots on January 21st, 2020. The clerk received notification from the state that partial funding was available for voting system purchases occurring between January 20th, 2020 and August 31st, 2020. Through the, a combination of a federal HAVA Care Act and state appropriate, appropriate funds, appropriated funds. The city paid for half the cost of the new tabulator and the other half has been billed to the state for this, for the state to pay their portion. A grant agreement must be signed. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution authorizing the clerk to submit a voting system grant agreement on behalf of the City of Manistee for partial funding of a new voting tabulator purchased last year. Contingent upon the review of the agreement by the City Attorney and further authorized the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Did you get that, Laura?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Any discussion, questions?
Just so I'm clear on, um, the base information where it says grand total, $5,295, is, does that represent the half that you're going for or is that the total amount?
That was the total amount of the tabulator minus, uh, the shipping was not included on that. So the shipping was our responsibility, but they've, um, are paying half of that. Um, and when I first asked for council's approval to purchase this, at that time, we didn't, um, we weren't approved for the grant. And then after we had it approved, after you approved, then they came back and offered, they had more funding. So they offered it up to more people. So, yep.
Thanks.
So way to go to come up with another 2,500 bucks for the coffers.
Every little bit helps.
It does, absolutely.
Anything else? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of amendment to the Manistee City Ordinance, Chapter 650, anti BLIGHT. Um, amendments have been made by the City Attorney to ordinance, Chapter 650, anti BLIGHT. These changes will allow for more efficient enforcement of the ordinance by the police department. At this, as an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce the proposed amendment to Manistee County, Manistee City Ordinance, Chapter 650, anti BLIGHT. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. Mick Schmansky.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second and any discussion?
Well, you know, I got a question. We're waiting for it. So they took it out to make everything easier for you guys to, uh, the BLIGHT. I'm sorry, I got a puppy that's driving me insane. Um, and there's another BLIGHT committee? I guess?
There's an ad hoc BLIGHT committee.
Okay.
Ad Hoc Advisory BLIGHT Committee.
So is, is that gonna help you or?
The ad hoc committee or the-
Yeah, the, the committee.
Yeah, we've been meeting and, and I think one of the, the main things the ad hoc committee is gonna provide is, is trying to identify additional resources such as United Way or Habit Death Remandie for, just to provide resources for those people who can't afford to, to make the corrections. We, as a police department, will enforce the ordinance. We can write tickets, but I'd like to also work it from a couple of different angles. We can actually provide additional services to members of our public as well as working with, um, you know, safe build from that angle. So I think in order to really have a, a true impact on BLIGHT, you gotta kinda hit it from a different, three different angles.
Okay, I just got, I've got one more question, then I'll be done. Is it gonna make you clean up the BLIGHT a little faster? Because I feel like at the rate we're going, I'm gonna be 110 before we see any type of, you know, changes.
So what this ordinance changes do is it allows us to get to enforcement quicker. As we've discussed before, officers may contact, they advise, then they have to provide written notice and it allows us to get the actual enforcement sooner, meaning writing tickets sooner. And hopefully coming up with resources, the BLIGHT ad hoc committee, that, that will help get things cleaned up much quickly. So, you know, this summer, having more officers working more hours as opposed to working a COVID schedule, I anticipate having a, a, uh, much larger impact on BLIGHT.
Okay, I lied. I have one more question. So I, I was reading, I was reading, I actually read through this whole thing. Um, the, the houses that are not habitated by anybody that are, you know, boarded up, closed up, is there a ti, like, can they just sit there for, you know, 50 years or is there something that, to where they, they have to do something with them? It just can't sit vacant for, you know, the next 25 years?
Well, it depends if it, if it's a violation of ordinance or a violation of, um, Michigan BLIGHT area rehabilitation. And maybe I should afford to, uh, defer to George Sailor in terms of-
Well, I, I guess I would answer that by saying that vacant alone does not constitute BLIGHT. Uh, but if vacant along with, uh, there's no paint on the structure, uh, there's holes in the roof, and the structure's not properly waterproofed, it's not habitable as a house, those kinds of factors, uh, fit then the definition of what is considered a BLIGHTed structure and would give us the authority to pursue that under the ordinance.
Okay. Okay, I'm done this time. See, easy.
Anybody else? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of authorizing to pursue the twenty twenty-one FEMA FD grant for the, uh, for twelve self-contained breathing apparatuses for the Manistee Fire Department. The City of Manis, the City of Manistee Fire Department is pursuing the FEMA FD grant for the purchase of twelve new self-contained breathing apparatuses to replace the current outdated air packs to the current standards. At this time, council could take action to authorize the Manistee Fire Department to pursue the twenty twenty-one FEMA FD grant for new SCBA's. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Bachman.
I'll second.
Second, it's Rubowski.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions?
I have a question. Why twelve? I mean, there's seven people on the fire, in the fire department? I just want to know why twelve, that's all.
We actually cut it down from our last year's, um, trial because the NFPA looks at it per seat of trucks. We currently carry thirteen air packs right now. Um, one of them being a very outdated one. Um, but that's how they go about is finding it by seats on the truck. Currently, like you said, we have, uh, seven staff along with four other, uh, police officers that are cross. So we don't quite utilize all of them, but that is going by a seats on a truck. We actually tried cutting that down for how many seats we actually do have.
Well, something's out of service too. You need extra one, right, Mark?
It does help, yes. We'll have, if there's something that a pack goes out, hopefully if we have new ones, it'll be a long time before that happens, but
But it happens.
Our current status, uh, we're, we're taking packs out and switching them out quite often.
Okay. I was just curious. Thanks.
Chief, this is Mick Schumansky. Um, is there any budget for replacing these packs currently in our, in your budget?
Currently, no. We've kind of gone by and we've tried to go for these grants. Um, we tried last year, we did a combination grant with the two townships. Um, I think it was unsuccessful because the other stations had slightly newer packs. Um, you have to go through two phases or two additions of the pack. We're currently running on a two thousand and seven addition. And technically, we'll, we should have pretty good chance of success this round because we're, we're past the two thousand and eighteen edition. We'll totally be out of it by the twenty-three edition. At that time, our packs will be beyond their NFPA service. Like, they still function, they still operate. We have a lot of issues with them, especially with our communications that are on them. But, um, that's, that's, I guess, is, if that answers your question.
Mark, what's our match on that grant?
Currently, we have a ten percent match. Uh, we have a gentleman that does a, uh, writing up for it. We supply him with a little bit of information and he puts it all together. Our match will be a ten percent. So we'll be looking at around the, out the ten thousand range, just slightly under, depending on where that actual price comes back in at.
Any other questions?
Is, is there a resale for this equipment once, uh, once we acquire new?
Not usually. The last time we did this was back in twenty eleven, twenty twelve. I think Chief Bachman was in there at that time, uh. The packs at that point are, the, the, the actual company that builds the packs that we currently have no longer produces fire service air packs. They still will give us parts, but they're, uh, currently out of business in the fire service. They are still in to hazardous materials and industrial. But their, their ratings did not pass the NFPA specs, so they dropped that line.
Of course, anything that doesn't pass NFPA can't go to any other fire service. It has to be taken out of service, correct?
Correct.
Anybody else? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sipsek?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of Compensation Commission Recommendation for Council Salaries. Compensation for the mayor and members of city councils established based on procedures in the, in the chapter, or the charter, state statute and local ordinance. The fundamental point in these requirements is that the mayor and council may not approve changes in their own level of compensation. Any change in the compensation must take effect after the terms of all current council members have expired. Under established procedures, city council may not develop compensation rates, even though the rates do not become effective during the term of the city council. Rates are developed by an independent compensation commission, which only meets every other year. The council may reject or accept the compensation commission recommendations. They may not be modified. If the council rejects a recommendation, they are returned to the compensation commission for further consideration. Rejection can only occur if the majority of council, five members, vote to reject. The recommendation, if the recommendations are accepted, they will be implemented at the beginning of the year two thousand and twenty-three after all current council terms have expired. The current salary for the mayor and city council are four thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and three thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars per year respectively. These rates have been in effect since January twenty oh nine. The compensation commission recognizes the importance of city council and acknowledges the commitments required for its members. Therefore, the commission, the compensation commission is recommending that these amounts be increased to five thousand for the mayor and three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five for council. At this time, council could take action to either accept or reject the compensation commission recommendations. Is there a motion to either accept or reject?
I would make a motion to reject it. I don't know why we, why, why we need to up it. I mean, it hasn't, it's been the same since two thousand and nine.
Schumansky, I will second that.
Um, Mayor, if I can just, um, say, when I, we, I met, I am the staff liaison for this commission and I met with, uh, the members and their only thing they said that, you know, without having an increase since two thousand and nine, they were hoping, they said not that they want, um, you know, the compensation to be the reason that somebody runs for council, but they also wanted to, you know, they were hoping that maybe it would draw a little bit of attention. They said it was kind of that double-edged sword, you know, they want, um, to have people interested in council, um, and interested in running. But that was just, and they said without having an increase since two thousand and nine, they wanted to throw it out there. And I don't know if you remember from last time, but, um, for those who either are, this is the same amount that they, um, suggested last time too. So they just brought it back.
Thank you, Heather. We have a motion in a second to reject the compensation commission. Is there any, any comments from council members? Any suggestions, concerns?
We make another motion to accept it. At the same time, we have to go through the first one.
Mr. Sailor?
Your mic's.
If the motion to reject does not pass by a two-thirds majority, you don't have to go any further, really. Uh, you don't have to have a motion to accept. If you take no action, then the compensation commission's recommendation is deemed accepted. So after you vote on this motion, if you don't have five votes in favor, uh, you don't even need a motion to accept. Uh, just taking no action results in acceptance.
I appreciate Heather's comments on why they made this recommendation. I, I can't argue with that. It's been a long time since they've done it. And I certainly didn't jump at it for the cash. But, uh, I, I understand the logic and so I will vote to reject that motion, first one. Well, you know, interesting, this is Mick. Uh, you know, I never thought about that, but you know, the last election, nobody ran against anyone, right? We, we couldn't, you know, as hard as I tried, I couldn't find anyone in the fifth district to run, uh, other than myself. Uh, and I'm, I'm guessing that it was probably similar across a city, which is, you know, sad to, to, to be honest. Um, I'm not sure that the money, you know, a hundred and fifty or whatever, the, the small amount of, of difference would make a difference in somebody wanting to, to become involved in, in city politics. But, um, you know, whatever we can do to encourage people to get more involved, uh, I, I honestly, I didn't know there was a compensation when I ran for city council. So I was real surprised when there was a check in the mail. So, uh, go figure.
I actually didn't know either till I was filling out paperwork after I was already, you know, on council. So I, I, yeah, I don't think there needs to be a.
Yeah. And, and I think timing is obviously not the best. Again, we're in a, we're in a pandemic. We have a lot of people that are unemployed. Uh, and voting for a raise for us is kind of the same as, you know, the eye turns when, when Congress votes for giving themselves a raise. So, um, but it, but it was an interesting point, Heather, that you made that, that they brought up the fact that, um, you know, there hasn't been any kind of compensation and, and maybe it would encourage somebody. Uh, I'm not sure that a hundred and fifty dollars more a year would be the, a big spark, but, uh, I, I get, I get the, the.
I agree. And I told them that I would at least voice their, um, you know, their concerns with you. So.
Anybody else? So we have a motion to reject. We have a second. If there's no other comments, please take the roll.
Councilmember Gabowski?
No.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman?
No.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Callous communications and announcements. Tonight, we have, um, Republic Services and we have the Planning and Zoning Enforcement. Um, Matt, you're up.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council city staff, thank you very much for having a little bit of time to see me this evening for our annual report. You should see a slide on your screen currently. Is that correct?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I again appreciate the time. Uh, I'll make this brief as I always do and just kind of roll through some information for you and have a little bit of questions and answer at the end. If there's something that you wish for me to stop on at any point in time, please just say so and we'll pause and, and direct it at that point. Um, Republic Services, as you know, is a community partner here in Manistee. Uh, our landfill and hauling operations just down the road in Stronach Township. Uh, we are heavily involved in the community, uh, both in terms of where our men and women live and in terms of where we, uh, utilize what we pay them and back to the community. Um, the municipal contract, uh, we extended on July one of this past year. It expires in June of two thousand and twenty-five. It's a sixty-month term and we collect trash on Monday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday within the city. Um, recycling collection, you, city council, uh, allowed my recommendation to make that go away last year due to low participation. We had less than a hundred and fifty people participating out of the city, uh, which made it very cost prohibitive to continue to offer that. Additionally, last year, the drop site moved, um, from over by the DPW over to the MCC parking lot, utilizing the PAC fiber trailer, which, uh, resulted in a significant budget, uh, reduction for you guys. Uh, but also, uh, allowed PAC to continue their strong partnership in the community. So it was kind of a win-win for everybody with that change. Um, we did have the ad hoc refuse, uh, committee and members of council that were on that. Uh, that ended last year in two thousand and twelve when we did the two recommendations, the carding for all of the residential and that deployment changed this past July. Uh, I gotta tell you, I haven't heard anything good, bad or otherwise in the last few months. Um, so all of the noise around that change, like we always have when we do a change, has slowed down. Uh, and everyone seems to be happy with it. Um, we'll talk about some numbers that go into that here pretty soon. The DDA corrals, that just kicked off last week. Uh, we did our last, uh, curbside pickup on Thursday. And as of Monday or as of last week, Thursday, those dumpsters were open and available for the DDA. Uh, looking at just some rough numbers, if you look at the January two thousand and twenty-one numbers versus January twenty nineteen, you'll see the change in the curbside program. Uh, the nice part of that, uh, was a lift in, um, accountability at the city level. We were able to report an additional a hundred and fifteen totes. Um, and we're able to get that billing corrected within the city and, and get that revenue coming into just file services that those residents have. So right now, we've got six hundred and forty-two homeowners that are participating in that bag program and two thousand three hundred and fifty-nine people that are participating in the totes. So that's a, a nice change and it's about where we projected it when we brought this to council from the committee. If you look at your tons year over year, you'll see a, a ton jump last year. Um, and that ton jump is a direct result really of COVID. Um, I'm trying to get one of my other screens here to open up. So in two thousand and twenty versus two thousand and nineteen, the tons for the same comparable timeframe within the residential collection went up a hundred and eighty-one tons of material. Um, if you look at that based on what a garbage truck is, and garbage truck's about eight tons of material, that hundred and eighty-one tons represented twenty-two additional truckloads of material that came out of the city last year that didn't come out of the year before. Um, closely all tied to COVID. Um, that, uh, directly results in a budget impact for the city of about eighty-five hundred dollars in additional disposal costs. But it also directly, uh, took into an unbudgeted account on something that wasn't compensated back to Republic, about twenty-one K. So the, the COVID timeframe had a dramatic impact on both the city and Republic in terms of extra material. And I just wanted to share those numbers with you, just so you had, uh, a kind of a, a touch point on what that hundred and eighty-one tons really meant in terms of dollars and cents. Um.
This is Mick Schumansky. Can I, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
How much of this might be attributed to the fact that we are no longer recycling glass? And that glass is now going into the community. Um, again, I, I don't know if you had any previous data on how much glass was being recycled, but I'm assuming that that may be part of the very large, um, jump, but I have no data to confirm that.
Yeah. That COVID numbers, we saw that across the country. Um, so it's not unique to, to this geographical area or, or unique to someone who has glass or not glass. Um, if you poked your head into the recycle containers, the single stream recycle containers over MCC, you'll see a, a lot of glass that still goes in there. Um, you know, a lot of people just don't pay attention to the rules that are posted or the guidelines. So they assume it's recyclable and, and they still put it in there. Um, you know, I don't think that that hundred and eighty-one tons was a direct reflection of the glass. You could tie a little bit to it if you wanted to, but I think the vast majority is truly that COVID impact of kids not being in school, people not being at work, more people at home, more food being prepared at home as the restaurants weren't available. All of those things that traditionally were in the commercial dumpsters around the community really pulled back into the households.
So, okay, so, so just as a, you know, a, a data point, uh, how much glass was recycled in two thousand and seventeen? For example, when you were still recycling glass from Manistee?
So the glass is not broken out as an individual weight within the way that your recycling is collected?
Okay.
So the, the interesting part, uh, Mr. Schmansky about recycling is as the, as the manufacturers get better and better on designing their packaging, it's what's called what lightweighting, and we've talked about this before. So the plastic water bottle, for example, the plastic water bottle has decreased in the amount of plastic in it by twenty-fold in the last ten years. So it takes, you know, twenty times more water bottles to create the same ton of material in terms of number of water bottles as it did, you know, ten years prior. So that lightweighting also makes it hard to really look at recycle weights year over year. This year, we saw a dramatic influx in fiber. This year, we saw a dramatic influx in fiber. Um, with all of the packagings that were being shipped through all of the, you know, the Amazons and. And that type of uh online purchasing. So that was the big increase this year. Um. But these are the numbers that that I have for you this evening.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. If we pop into the next one. We do do a spring event every year. Last year, we did postpone it because of COVID. This year, that same event that we scheduled last year will reappear, and that's a shredded event for the community. We're going to place two shredding trucks at um Youth Armory Building. Um, and that's going to service any resident within the city of Holland who's. Purged out some of those bills over the last year, those old tax records or whatever that information is, that they want securely gone. Um, that uh didn't use it for starting a fire per se or or other ways. So that's the event um that uh. We've chosen um with city staff to bring back this year. That's gonna be on May fifteenth from eight to eleven thirty AM. Um, and that's always a a well-received event, uh, those spring events, uh, with a a good turnout somewhere between two and five hundred cars. Um, the new DDA dumpster program, as we talked about before, has launched. Um, this is a picture from last week Thursday in the top uh left-hand corner. Um, and that's not gonna happen anymore on River Street, so that's part of what the DDA's charge was. Um, to take those piles of two yards that were set out the night before. Um, and get those off the street, so when residents and snowplow crews and everyone else are walking through downtown. That those aren't things. So this this benefits not only the stores and the restaurants, but it's a great benefit for the residents of our downtown and our visitors as well, so. And then just some future thoughts for you, you know, we'll continue to monitor those new programs. We're looking at additional sites to add dumpsters as new businesses arrive. Um, we're continuing to discuss improvements in the recycle programs, and I'm always here to hear any suggestions or questions from council. With that, I come to a close, barely ten minutes after I started. I hope that was quick enough for you guys tonight.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The very first slide that you presented. From June twenty eighteen to July of twenty nineteen. So anyway, you can give this to give us the same information, but on a calendar year basis? Like, uh, compare all of twenty nineteen to twenty twenty?
I can, yeah, the original uh slide deck was set up on the contract year, and so that's the way it's just always been, but I can definitely change that to year-to-date numbers.
I think it would kind of make a little more sense considering what we know happened in twenty twenty, so.
Mm-hmm.
That would help.
Absolutely.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, just thinking about light and um different resources. Have we thought about having a different program for maybe having like a discount for anybody that could rent a dumpster? That's trying to clean up their house. Um, I know I've tried running a dumpster and I can barely afford it, so it's kind of like someone's trying to clean up a house and. They can't really afford a dumpster, so is there a way we can help them out or have some kind of program?
That's an interesting idea. I can pursue it with city staff and see what we can come back to the council with.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Uh, just a comment, this is Mick Shemansky. Uh, I am always impressed with. The quality of customer service uh from your employees uh that do the trash collection in Manistee. Uh, I am, you know, more than once, uh, have seen them go above and beyond to assist. Uh, in a number of different ways, uh, and I don't wanna put anyone in in. Maybe get somebody in trouble for doing stuff, but but your people really are a a integral part of the community and and they are, you know, again, I'm. Uh. Very pleased with the the quality of of service that they deliver while they're making their rounds.
Thank you for that. Uh, this is where we live, work, and play, and we want it to be just as nice as you guys do.
I echo that, Mick. You guys, your company does a great job. The guy who does my stuff is awesome, and and I think I'm his friend, so good job. Thank you for your work.
Anybody else? As usual, Matt, thank you for your time. Thank you for your presentation. It's enlightening. Um, keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and member of the council.
Next, consideration of planning and zoning enforcement. A packet of a yearly review of enforcement violations conducted by the Planning and Zoning Department. HTC actions, Planning Commission action, and ZBA action carried out in twenty twenty. This update is required to be presented to city council for the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. No action is required on this item. Mike, are you handling that tonight?
Um, I'm actually uh here with uh Zach Samples. Uh, he been, he has been acting as your zoning administrator while I've uh. Been, you know, working to uh facilitate the apartment since Rob's departure. Um, I'm gonna let him open it up here and then, uh, but I will chime in occasionally with it, so um, go ahead, Zach.
Good evening, guys. Um, like Mike said, I'm Zach. I'm I'm the new planner here in the city and the in the county as well, so I'm just gonna kind of outline here what we're going through with the zoning enforcement. The HTC, the Planning Commission, um, the ZBA. This is all requirements for, like it says, for the Planning Enabling Act, but it's also a requirement for the RRC certification, so we're kind of killing two birds with one stone here. So on on the first one there, that's the enforcement stuff, that's that's you, Mike, there you got?
Yep, so uh, just to quickly uh bring you guys through it, um, I don't wanna waste a lot of time on it, but um. So we had a busy year with enforcement, uh, you know, with and between developing a baseline for the short-term rental, uh, as well as um. The dumpster ordinance uh in enforcement on that, that is uh gonna start on June first, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, you know, sending out that mailing as well as uh working with the HTC on their um recommendation of enforced light on four eleven. Three forty-seven and three forty-nine River Street. Um, we've also identified and worked with the ci- uh, city police department, written complaints from residents and property owners. Within the city of Manistee uh to resolve issues. Um, and we haven't had to issue out or recommend issuing out a municipal ticket. So we're we're kind of happy with that, you know, trying to work with the residents to resolve these uh, these, you know, zoning violations without having to go uh that route. Um. You know, we've worked with our special use permits um to sit there and and try to make sure that they are um meeting those uh criteria player, product, excuse me, prior to. Um, signing off on their business registrations that then go to Heather. Um, we work uh to make sure that they're following all the requirements that that they are before they can open up. Um, so. We did a lot of permit closeouts with the HTC, um, as well as uh, you know, working again with city staff and and Zach and myself have done that, so. Um, just so real quick on the enforcement, guys, um, if you have any questions, I'll take them at this time.
Anybody have any questions for Mike?
Oh, you may be small, but you're mighty. Lots of accomplishments in the last year.
Right. Um. And I I'll let Zach continue, and I appreciate that, guys, uh, but um, I I don't take all the credit for any of this. Uh, we are a team here and. Um, Zach's a a great planner, and I'll I'll let him continue up with this stuff.
Thank you. So so next up, we have the uh year in review for the historical district uh commission there. Um. I'll save reading each of the actions there in your packet, but it kind of outlines. Each of the actions and kind of the mo- the major motions of the of the permits and and things like that that came through the HTC this year. Um, are there any questions on that before we move to the next one? Okay. So it's kind of the same thing again here. This one's for the Planning Commission. It's just a year in review. Here's the major items that came through. Here's the, here's the list of the actions and and uh. Things like that. We've got amendments and everything else that went through there as well, so are there any, are there any questions on that? Okay, last but not least, we've got the zoning board of appeals. We've got their year in review for twenty twenty. Again, it's another list of major items on the agenda that were on there and the actions for that. So for, are any questions on that? I can take those now as well. And with that, that's that's all we had to present to you guys.
Well, there is one other thing. We do have recommendations that are coming in, guys. Um, you'll be seeing those as amendment request or recommendations coming in a. A future pra- uh packet, so um, look forward to those, but within those, uh, there's, you know, recommended changes of temporary storage structures. Um, to outline uh what the Site Plan Review Committee is as a requirement for the RRC. Um, amendments to patios uh. And fencing. Um, and then I think that was it, right, Zach? Oh, and then design standards for um. For residential neighborhoods um that are all gonna be in future packets for your review, so I won't go into those too deeply tonight, but. Those are all requirements of the uh, the Michigan and Planning Enabling Act one twenty-five thirty-eight nineteen. Um, and we just uh, while we've already done this for the Planning Commission, um, it is a requirement to also um. Give you guys an update as well, so.
Anybody have any questions for them?
I just got a quick question for for Mike. Are you gonna start working on the the sign ordinance too?
So uh, the sign ordinance is somewhere we have looked at. Um. We we really need to identify it more as far as and narrow down as far as what is needed to be looked at on there. Um, there's also uh some interesting sign um ordinances that are coming out of from like the city of Detroit. Um, and other areas that I kind of want to look at before we actively pursue something like that. It's it is also a large undertaking. Um, as we've talked about before, um, and without guidance from. Uh, the Planning Commission on the areas that they really want, or without us putting together a presentation. Um, that is, that is more in tune of the communities that they want to mimic or um ideas of that. It it's difficult to move forward. Um, so I I think this is an agenda item on um an upcoming planning commission. Uh, I will say that the, and and you guys can kind of see this from your year review. Um, the Planning Commission meetings have been incredibly busy. Um, so entering into. Um. A sign ordinance development within those meetings is 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 a bit of an undertaking. Um, it might be something that we need to look at, you know, having a a kind of a work session like you guys do for those kind of developments. Um, and that's something I can bring up to the Planning Commission to see if if that's something that they would like to pursue.
Okay.
Anybody else? Mike and Zach, I'm really impressed with the way you laid this all out for us. It made really easy reading and understanding. You've had a busy year. Um. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Concerns and comments. Citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment. Of municipal services, activities, or area of city involvement. Citizens that attend of the uh phone shall be recognized by the city clerk for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Every person in the virtual waiting room will be called by the last four digits of their telephone number. Heather, do you want to do that and then move on to officials and staff and council members?
Yes, I will. Uh, we had a couple members of public at during the meeting, but it looks like they have dropped off already, so there's no public comment. So I will move on to officials and staff. City manager.
Nothing at this time.
City attorney.
Nothing, Heather, thank you.
Finance director.
Nothing, Heather, thank you very much.
Police chief.
I don't have anything. Thanks, Heather.
Fire chief.
I just want to thank council for its support on our FEMA grant. Thank you much and uh have a good night.
City attorney. I'm sorry, city engineer, excuse me.
Nothing, Heather, thank you.
Okay, sorry, assessor.
Nothing, thank you.
And planning and zoning.
Nothing, Heather, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Bachman.
Nothing, Heather, thank you.
Councilmember Beaton.
Not at this time, thank you.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Uh, I just got a quick question. Um, where are we with the equipment for the fire chief and? Uh, Josh, for the vehicle equipment?
I can answer that question. Um, we both made our orders last week. It should be two to three weeks before the equipment comes in, and then we'll ship our vehicles to get it installed, so a month or so, it sounds like.
Okay, I was just wondering, in case you guys didn't notice, I'm extremely impatient with things. That's it, that's all I had.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes, I'd just like to uh tell the guys that worked on the sewers the other night, the the cold and wind and snow, they did a good job. I appreciate them out there working hard. Uh, also, uh, maybe for the mayor and city manager, do we ever think of lodging tax on those new apartments when they get built? A lodging ta- tax on the. Yeah, they have them up in Travers and that. The only lodging tax I have, I'm familiar with is is for hotels, motels, and and that goes to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I don't know of one on just apartments or other. Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I meant the the apartments when they build the hotels and that. Oh. Oh, for the for the proposed two new hotels? Right. Yeah, that would be, that would be under the uh lodging tax. I think, I don't know if that's the correct term, but. That is collected and given to the Convention and Visitors Bureau to uh promote the area. Okay, good, thank you.
Councilmember Poniac.
Nothing at this time.
Mayor Protem Schmansky.
Nothing at this time. Happy uh Bat Tuesday, so go Monte Bra.
And Mayor Zalinski.
I have nothing. Um, thank you, everybody, for your time. I'll uh take a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion.
Second.
Second.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a great evening. Stay healthy.